Hello. It's your game, look.
We'll call tonight's meeting of the Lloyd City Council in order. I want to bring to your attention, we have amended agenda this evening. We have a safe route to school under resolutions and we'll have a closed session for five minutes for non-elected personnel. Manny, would you take a roll call, please?
Kent Miller.
Here.
Bob Richards.
Yeah.
Charlene Engle.
Present.
Matt Hadi.
Here.
Triff Brown.
Here.
Tony Gangler.
Here.
Robert Peterson.
Yeah.
Lloyd Latrell.
Present.
Thank you. If you'll stand with me for the invocation of the pledge of allegiance. Heavenly Father, be with us tonight as we conduct the business for our first day. Be with the young boy scouts that are with us as they learn on how we run our communities. Be with their leaders for the guidance that they will give these young people. Be with our law enforcement for their protection and for our servicemen here and abroad that are keeping us safe. In your name we pray, amen.
Amen. I am the president of the United States of America and to be remembered for what it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Bob, you have anything for us this time?
No, I just like the weather right now.
Yeah.
It can stay a little bit.
Tony?
Oh, I'd like to wind the complaint if I can.
Okay, she can.
Last meeting, we were talking about the proposed rate hikes on utility rates on people outside the city of Austin. I believe we should probably have a pay a premium, a little bit premium, but I think we're asking for too much.
Okay.
I really do, it's not... We've got a big cash cow out there, so to speak, and we shouldn't be expecting them to pay for our shortcomings on the city. I don't want my rates raised any more than anybody else does. I think they're plenty high, but it's pretty cowardly of us to jack every rate up and if we want to do it, we just will get everybody mad.
Sure. Okay. Anything else?
I think that's probably enough.
Bob, just a quick question. On the ball fields, does the city furnish electricity?
You do.
Yeah.
Well, and I think it's a great deal. I wish people that run those would be conscious of what it costs to run their lights. I want that ball field and the other guy to start eight lights. I mean, they don't need lots to afford them, you know? It's just, to me, if we're running lights, we don't think we can run them. I'd just like them to be conscious of it. It's a great thing that the city does for us.
I'm assuming what they probably do, they start a little game and start it their way. The town doesn't give away from them, they get started and you, and the lights are like, it's really expensive. It doesn't hurt to be conscious. Mel Brown.
Yeah.
Charlie.
Just wanted to be welcome.
That's got a nice sound around it.
Not yet.
That's really good.
Want to be one of them?
Come in.
I just want to take advantage of such a full room to invite everybody to my ice cream social. It's right on this side of the park.
It's free?
It's free!
It's free, okay. It'll make sure it's free.
For two hours.
For two hours. Are you going to tie us for two hours, five years?
No, well, I mean, I'm going to serve service five and I'm going to stop service at.
That'd be a good question. Yeah. We'll bill.
Is that a variety of questions?
Oh, yes.
City of $100, okay. Floyd. Okay, thank you. Katie, do you have anything for us this time?
I do, I'll be brief. This is just a follow-up on last meeting. Bob had a question about handling dog complaints, how a private citizen, if they see a violation, code violation regarding a dog, what to do. This really goes for any code violation. For example, dog running at large. If Chris doesn't see it, then we need our citizens to come forward as witnesses to that. But, for example, your neighbor's dog is in your yard. You need to be willing to sign a written statement that describes the incident, date, what happened, whose dog, how you know it's their dog. Pictures are great. Submit that to Chris or myself and we'll work up a complaint, bring that person into court. But, that citizen who made the complaint has to be willing to come to court to testify. So, it's kind of a two-pronged thing. You've got to make a written statement and you have to testify in court on the court date when you're subpoenaed. So, I don't know if that answers your question. I can certainly do something in the paper if you guys think it's necessary to kind of inform the public of how to make a code complaint. Yes?
This last week in the bullet call, there is a letter to the editor about a complaint. It made it sound to me like complaints have been made and nothing's happened. Is that accurate to me?
Well, I don't know what you mean by "nothing's happened." We've had a few come through city court. When Chris gets a complaint, he works up the paperwork for complaint, they come to court. Now, if it's the first time a dog has bitten somebody, as a city, do not take their dog away. As long as they're properly vaccinated and they go through all the proper steps, pay the fine, typically the dog's going to go bad. So, if folks are wanting dogs to be taken away, that's not generally our practice unless the dog is violent and a repeat, repeat fighter, so to speak.
How many repeats does it take?
It depends. I don't think I've ever had... We had one that was a... It wasn't a dog that bit, it was a dog that kept getting out. And that took four or five times and the judge took the dog away. But, that wasn't a violent dog, it was just a dog that like threw him around that. So, it just depends on what the judge decides on that picture day, what the situation is and how violent, things like that. But, I don't know, Chris, do you have anything to add to that?
No, there's one dog, I think it was only one time in the last 10, 12 years where we've had a repeat, one second bite. And that dog was, the pet owners were asked to remove the dog from the city, which they did. There's not been a three-pier.
My only thing behind this is that the public being informed as to what the procedure is already on. I don't have any specifics.
Sure. Well, I can sure put a blurb together and if papers got space, they could sure publish it if they wanted.
I think that'd be good way to try to spread the word.
All right.
Thanks a lot.
Thank you. Come in. Yeah, I got a few things, but before I get, before we're down on the road, I know we have members of the Humane Society here would like to talk to you about a program, a trap neuter and release program that they're working on through the Humane Society and how they can work with us to do that. Stephanie Sinner will present them and some other folks would like to speak on that issue here. We'll start there.
Thank you to the council for letting us come and give you a little bit of education. As Glenn mentioned, I'm Stephanie Simmons and I'm the current vice president of the Post-Rock Humane Society. We have several members in attendance and may call upon them if there's some specific questions that I'm not clear on in this program. I believe in your packet you received, or should have received, a fact sheet about a program called a trap neuter release program. This is a program that the Post-Rock Humane Society is exploring and researching and would like to implement. And so, what we come before you tonight to discuss is just to give you some more education on this and why we think it would be of benefit to the community. I'm not going to go into a lot of the details because I think you've probably been able to read what a trap neuter release program is. But, why this is so important to us rather is, as a humane society, we don't have an animal shelter here locally. We have a great agreement with the vets and they do us a great job, but we also have a really large feral cat population that many of us have heard about or encountered. And it's getting rather large and it's continuing to grow and we've looked at different ways and strategies but never technically consulted it or started to see some decline in that population. And so, as part of our mission as Post-Rock Humane Society, we really want to focus this year on education and making people responsible pet owners, but addressing this issue. So, we as a board have brought this to the primary focus and would like to start a trap neuter release program in Lloyd. And we are not looking for any type of funding resource. We're going to do this on our own through the funds that we receive from our donors and have been soliciting and conversating about. But, what we would rather look to collaborate with the city on is education. Of course, it's going to impact the city. Of course, there's going to be resumes, asking questions. So, we really need to forage forward in this in a collaborative effort of knowledge and what it will do and what it can do. I'm going to bring Kathy Snyder Torres up. She's been the lead on this program for us for the last few months. We've been looking at all different kinds of programs all over the nation and we have chosen the alley cat allies program, which the fact sheet that you have in front of you. And I'll let her just talk a little bit about the brief logistics of how the trap neuter release works.
We hope to be able to trap in these cat colonies most of the animals in one night because when we trap them, after that, they're trap shot. So, someone will go out, set up the traps, stay with the traps while the cats are trapped and then in the morning take them to the vet where they'll be neutered or spayed and have their shots and their rabies vaccination. So, we'll be retrieving cats from the population that are a lot healthier, that don't contribute to the population, that's quieter, better behaved, better citizens. And if you have any questions about it, please ask me. I may know the answer.
Where's the money coming from to vaccine?
It's our money. It'll all be Humane Society donations. We're paying to play here.
What are you planning on starting?
As soon as we get the traps. If we get some support from you, there's no sense that I'm doing this if there's going to be some kind of a trap and kill, you know, set up down the road. So, if we can get support from you for like a three-year program at least, that would be great. That would be great. The average lifespan of our feral cat is three years. So, if we manage to get most of the animals properly trapped, neutered, spayed and healthy, then that population will decrease over the years. So, you'll wind up smaller populations.
What if the property owner that has 25 cats and she's feeding them and she doesn't want you to try and catch them?
That's education. That's education. We need to go talk, somebody needs to go talk to her, explain that we're there for the cats. This is going to make the cats' lives easier, better. It's going to be less effort on her part to feed them because fewer will be, less injured, less fighting, less disease for certain. I think anybody that knows that we have their cats does understand that part's going to go wrong because this is a human program. So, they'll be treated gently all along.
And I think that's a great point, Charlene. I think that's the key part of this is that the Humane Society will get calls, but we know that the city will be impacted by this program being released and the education put out there. And so, we want to come to you upfront and say, how can we work together on this plan? Because we want to be able to address those issues that come up and not have more work for you guys. I think, Chris might be able to correct me if I'm wrong, has this been something that's been looked at before?
We have. Yeah, I made a proposal for TNR to the city council, I think, in 2004. And at first they were in favor of it and then the next thing that comes out, away from it because of the expense. But, in favor, I mean, if you're going to do anything about feral cats, TNR is probably in most favor. Just relocating or euthanizing are not satisfactory, don't achieve satisfactory results. More cats are just right in there to take advantage of the resources available for those cats that have been removed. TNR, I believe, is the best answer if you're going to do anything with feral cats. That and education, let's just talk about.
Can you trap those cats and you find some other disease or whatever, will the veterinary then take care of them? If they can't be...
Absolutely.
Yes.
Looks like it's a good start for the major problem that we have. Thank you for stepping up.
Yeah, well, thank you for the support. And we'll work with Chris on continued communication. Our first wave of hitting this would be able to get it out into the public and education about it before we start going and trapping. That way, we kind of get it out there and we get some of the things knocked out, those questions that get asked back, so it doesn't impact you in a negative way.
What is your membership?
Our current membership? I'm asked to, because... Do you step up? We're actually in our current membership drive, so I'm going to tell you that we probably sent out about 50 letters that are actually current members that get donation.
What does it cost to be a member?
You can give any amount, but to be a member is 25 and then evoting for its 50, I believe.
We hope to put a letter in paper, an article in paper before we start to let people know that we'll be trapping and if they got their animals, we're in the aisle, there's a chance that the animals might be caught up in this situation. So, if we wound up with a spayed cat, they didn't want to have spay, but...
Will you be having a visit there?
Yeah, we will send to that because that's a great place to educate, so we can still have the information there to release as long as we work at a good state.
Surely you've been in contact with the vet to know that all of a sudden you get 20 cats to deal with here and over and in there.
It's a great question to miss on our part. But, yeah, we've been in contact with all the vet clinic and have been really researching this and until we really get deep into it, we won't know the exact number, but they feel supported them that they could handle the amount that may come in.
They'll be able to come back to you next year with good numbers and figures.
Thank you for your presentation.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Okay, continuing on, this Friday, the applications for the transportation director position are due. We need to have a committee once again to handle that. So, if you'd like to make some appointments. That's your three in a row. How about Bob, Tony, and then... That would be... What was I going to say? Well, it's not five. I served an ice cream. The transportation position, this will be the interview committee. That's what I want for you. We'll set the time.
Time's up.
Try to work best for you most time after four o'clock. What time works best for you?
After five o'clock works best for me.
Five oh one.
Maybe five oh two. We'll try to get it.
We'll have cheese on the plate.
We said score, you made that.
Okay, so that'll be our committee. Maybe I need that. It'll be in for five. All right, very good. All right, on the railroad crossing, I had a conversation with Kyle Railroad here recently. We do have a proposal here from KDOT to go in there and do some extensive work, but they've also proposed that they come over and do some interim work here while that's going on. The tracks have obviously become rougher here, so what they'd like to do is provide material and help us out packing that in there. We haven't coordinated that yet with them, so I don't know. That should just take a day or two to handle that, so, but we still get a lot of calls and they get a lot of calls to continue without.
Glenn?
Yeah.
May I have your number?
Sure, absolutely.
Okay. About the railroad tracks here, is there anything that we as a city need to do to help them pay for this or whatever? The last time they redid it, it was an improvement, but they were just fairly volatile after they got done with them.
Right, well, the inner fix...
So, if you kick in some money to get it then considerably nicer, that would...
Right.
Need to look at that option.
Right, this would be a short term and then the long term here, we'll hopefully have by the end of the year where they're actually going to take out and replace the panels and everything. And that will be the long-term fix. But, that is going to be basically federal money that comes from the state for us, but that's going to be later on this year. I haven't got a contract. They were promising that someday they'd have a contract with us, but have not seen that yet. But, this won't be as extensive as that. This will be just to smooth it out for a while and, you know, they've tried that before and it hasn't really been all that successful. But, they got a new manager actually and he contacted last week and wanted to talk about doing this, so I said, "That's fine," but, you know, what do you do? Is there any way we could get a sign that says "Rough process"? People that aren't from here, they don't realize that. I think I'm going to do that. Right. I mean, there's damage to vehicles and trailers are coming up and things like that. They want, they're saying, you know, if you're out of town, because if you're not aware of that, you don't think... Yeah, I was going to say, since it's a state highway with KDOT, that's a scrutiny that we can talk a little about. I think there would be a good, some kind of warning. Right, yeah, there are people who come through and... It doesn't matter how slow you go, you can't go so... No, it's rough no matter how you cross that, it really is, so... Go a block, walk a few, it's going to be... Yeah, I try to avoid it. Yeah, a lot of people don't understand what that is. So, yeah, we can do that and, you know, I think they're going to make an effort here. And like I said, we are in the pipeline to get federal money for that crossing. The other thing we do have coming up is the comprehensive plan. Anna Keenan will be coming to address the planning commission on August 12th. Their regular meeting on that and so that will be kind of one of their last meetings with them before we wrap up the comprehensive plan and get that approved and recommended to the city council. The other thing we were, Tony was talking about electric rates and the possibility of adjusting rates, especially outside the city, inside the city. And after talking with our electric people and our billing folks, I think we need to do what would be basically a full rate review of the electric rather than just addressing that one issue. I think we need to look at our rates. It's been about five or six years since we've done that and I think it's probably time again. We look at the whole thing, so we can include everything rather than just doing the outside versus inside, just look at our entire rate structure. Take longer to do that, but I think it's probably a good time, as long as we're talking about it, I think it's a good week. That'll be coming forward and one of the meetings in August here, Schwab Eaton will be coming to talk with us about the water quality issues that we have and what our options would be for moving forward with that. So, I'm not sure which meeting they're going to come to yet.
And on the rate study, is it going to include electric water and so...
You know, I like to include all utilities, actually. So, I think we got to look at all three and, you know, yeah, it'll take some more time to do that, but I think it's been a while and so as long as it's fresh in our mind and we're looking at those things that would be part of our budget process here going forward, it just makes sense that we, I think, look at all three of those all at once.
Where do you look for time for that in this study?
Yeah, not sure yet. It usually takes a few months to do that. It's not real quick, but you're going to do all three.
Well, I can relate to what Tony was saying, but there's one option, be annexed, then you don't have to pay it. Otherwise, the people of Boyd are subsidizing people who live outside Boyd or, I mean, that are on the city tilt.
True, that, if those people all pay whatever the city asks to have the utilities brought to them. Well, that's true. We didn't bring it out there for free. We charged them for it. They paid to have the utilities brought there. For different...
I disagree. I disagree. But, I won't believe it.
Yeah, I think we're going to have that discussion going forward, just kind of bringing it up as it's been discussed, it just kind of struck me, probably time to look at that all the time, see what we want to do going forward on that. So, okay, that's it. Thank you.
Ask a question, a question. I went out by the rock handler and, you know, the gentleman is supposed to come in and do the crushing of the rock and whatnot. Why can't our guys load that rock up? Because I went out to the old landfill and looked, there's a place for that out there. He could bring his crusher out there and do the work out there rather than wait up here, having crusher here, haul it out there and so forth. Just get it out of there. Our guys have our guys do it.
Yeah, we could. It'll take some time for us to do it and if it was in this contract, he would do that, but...
They'll be keep putting this off. It'll never get done.
Right, yeah, I have not heard from him yet this week, so I didn't have an update on the rock pressure.
Thank you.
Okay. We have no public comment tonight on our agenda. The next item on the agenda is the consent agenda from the council meeting on July 1st, Declaration 7. Mr. Mayor, I see you approve the consent agenda. Didn't move that council on, but we approved the consent agenda in its entirety. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Miller. Any from the discussion? No from the discussion. Manny, please take a roll call.
Abel?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Brown?
Yeah.
Latrell?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Hadi?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Gangler?
Yes.
Thank you, Professor Perry.
I have a question on that. On stage five, Schwab Eaton, what services did they do on the water pump here?
That, I believe, was a consultation, consolation.
Consultation?
Consultation, Chris. Fee when Schwab Eaton addressed with another engineer that's more experienced in water plant construction as we're getting into looking at the possibility of a new water plant. I believe that's the one that you're looking at.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, that's on board. Next item on the agenda is Resolution 201414, safe routes to school. Next item on the agenda is Resolution 201414, Safe Route to School. And I think, like the winner was going to give a presentation.
Good evening. Thank you very much for allowing me to be here. I think I have enough of these both directions. Last time I was here, we talked about the safe routes to school grants that we had worked on in the past. And the first seven pages of that document I gave you are just background information on what we've done prior to this. Aware NCK...